Call to order the Tuesday, September ninth Village of Cambridge Board of Trustees meeting. Roll call, please.
Jacobson.
Here.
Blackwood.
Here.
Hollenbeck.
Here.
Trendall.
Here.
Bruning.
Here. All right, if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Lucy, proof of posting.
The agenda was posted in the upper and lower level of the Amundson Center, Badger Bank, the post office, and her website.
Okay. Number four, public comment. Is there anybody who would like to make a public comment? Okay. If not, we're going to move on to the approval of the consent agenda. And in that consent agenda, I'm showing Plan Commission minutes from eight twenty-five, Economic Development minutes from eight twenty-six, Village Board minutes from eight twenty-six, Personnel Committee minutes from eight twenty-eight and nine-four, and an operator license report. And they're all in your agendas.
Trustee Hollenbeck makes a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Trustee Blackwood, seconds.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? It's a lot of work.
Just a, there were just a few, the
The names.
Names and did you, you said you did change the one that referenced Library Board versus, okay, beautiful.
Yep, that was, that was, that's in the updated.
Perfect.
Yes. Anything else?
And you fixed my last name. The misspelling.
I did not, but absolutely, I'll take another.
It's Hollenbeck in the minutes.
Gotcha.
And it's Hollenbeck in the, just an anity.
No, absolutely, I'll take a peek. Our new clerk has been assisting with those.
Yeah, all good.
All right.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. Number six, reports, Personnel Committee. Brian is not here, so next, who's up? Jennifer or Kristin?
We had our Personnel Meeting on, well.
Couple of them.
Couple of them. One was for interviews for the Utility Superintendent, the meeting last week. It happened to do with, we had the Administrator three-month review and we had the handbook.
Couple things we'll be talking about in closed.
Yeah, several things that we'll be talking about in closed. We did not get to the handbook because the other, the closed discussion went a little long. So, we have made the decision to review the handbook independently completely and then we will come back to go through our revisions that we feel are important. And then, once the document's compiled, we'll come back to the full board with it.
Anything to add, Jennifer?
I think that that covers it.
All right, any questions for either of these committee members? If not, we're going to move on to number seven, approval of the bills, discussion of possible action. Lucy, take away.
Absolutely, give me just a second because my lovely trustee laptop is acting up. All right.
Do you need this?
Nope, I'm good. I made a copy, just in case. First run for $10,112.44, second run for $162,387.49, for a total of $172,499.93.
Okay. Can you note the highlights, please?
Yep, the two highlights are the Wolf paving and excavating for $131,001.48, and that is for Springwater Alley, and then the Village of Deerfield for our Deputy Services for $23,030.84.
Okay. Okay. Any questions to Lucy about our bills or any concerns from looking through our bill run?
Nothing that jumped out for me.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills in the amount of, trustee Hollenbeck makes a motion to pay the bills in the amount of $172,499.93.
Okay, we have a motion. Do you have a second?
I'll second. Trustee Trendall.
Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Bruning.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Hollenbeck.
Yes.
Trendall.
Yes.
Blackwood.
Yes.
All right. One of the most important parts of this meeting, bills are paid. So, now we move on to new business, discussion of possible action regarding the DNR tree grant.
Yes, I can take that one. I am looking to apply for two different DNR tree grants. One is the catastrophic storm damage grant and the other is the urban forestry startup grant. The catastrophic storm damage grant is from the storms that occurred on the, I believe, ninth and 10th when the governor declared a state of emergency. We might be able to get some money to assist with storm damage, which we did have in a few locations throughout the village. And then, an urban forestry startup grant, which I've been in correspondence with the DNR, and we will most likely qualify for that one. The catastrophic grant, I am asking for $20,000. And the urban forestry grant is a $5,000 matching grant. And what I would need is for a resolution to be in a legal meeting to be given that you give me permission essentially to apply for the grants. If you have any questions about them, I'm more than happy to answer if I can.
Do we need a resolution or can we just make a motion in this meeting stating that we can go ahead and apply for the grant?
I need a.
If the resolution is needed, then Lucy has some work to do.
No, it's, it's in the.
Yeah, it's in the form. It's just already written out here.
Yeah, it's the second half of the, there was the instructions at the top.
Yeah.
And then, it's a combined resolution. So, I'll make a motion to approve the combined authorizing resolution for urban forestry grant and the urban forestry catastrophic storm grant programs.
And trustee Brunig will second. Any questions or concerns?
Nice job finding these grants, looking for them, and then being proactive to apply for them.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Is the catastrophic, is that a matching grant or is that, that is not just the?
We have to essentially, there's an expenditure sheet you fill out with hours. It can be employee wages, including fringe wages.
Oh, great.
Equipment rental, equipment maintenance. It covers a very broad spectrum of expenses that we can get reimbursed for. And I believe we can get reimbursed for approximately $20,000.
Great.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Because you have to do roll call because the second one is matching.
Oh, okay.
Good call. So, we'll do a roll call on that, Lucy.
Bruning.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Hollenbeck.
Yes.
Trendall.
Yes.
And Blackwood.
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes. Moving on to eight B, discussion of possible action regarding the Computer Magic quote. I know Lucy's been all over this one.
Yes. So, this one is mine and I'm very proud to say that I did a lot of investigating and was able to bring it down from over 25,000. And how I did that is because it was thought that we needed our server for Workhorse, our accounting software, and we do not. We can use the cloud-based version of Workhorse that will incur a $1,200 a year fee for that to use the cloud-based versus the regular. But to replace our server is well over $10,000. And then, all of the maintenance and work to keep that server, and there's other components on top of it. And so, that is off. And so, now our quote is $15,815.9. Now, what this includes is Paula owed us too because she was the one we were discussing upgrading different things that brought up the Windows 11 update. So, I believe that on October 18th, that is when Microsoft's going to Windows 11. My desktop is the only one that does not need to be updated between DPW and Utility Superintendents and the rest of the admin staff. So, one of the components that I worked with Computer Magic on is I did not want desktops for everybody. And Paula kind of got me started with this again too. But because of the world we're living in, it's not feasible for everybody to have a desktop and a laptop. But I want the ability for if, if something happens, another pandemic, whatever it may be, that people have the ability to do. There's not all things can be done remotely, but there are pieces of our job that can be. So, all of the stations will have, except for mine, will have a docking station that hooks up to the monitor. And that way, the, again, like our, our new clerk, we don't have to go buy her a separate laptop. We're going, in this quote is, Cody's laptop is seven years old and doesn't really even work. So, Cody would have a new laptop with the docking station. The new Utility Superintendent would also have one so they could do reporting and things remotely and not have to stay at the shop to do some of those things. And then, the DPW's desktop does need to be replaced as well, and that's part of this quote. And that will be for all staff, it will be shared for all staff to be able to be used.
What are, so, the two, the public works like for Lucy, for, I'm sorry, not for Lucy, for, sorry, and not public works, Water and Sewer. So, Water and Sewer Superintendent's and the, and the one for Vicki, are those going to be charged back to Water and Sewer?
Yes.
Not to the, okay, perfect. So, so a portion of this bill
Yes.
would be, would be paid by Water and Sewer, not just by the village?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. And then, what is the ubiquity Promax forty, the last two items in the, the one for sixteen forty?
Absolutely. So, that, I'm pretty sure that that is going to be the, a desktop.
That's the desktop for?
So, the DPW.
Okay, okay. And then, and then?
Hang on, let me do this here. So, we have six ThinkPads, then the warranties, then the USB docks, then I have, oh, here's the desktop computer. So, the Promax 48 and the, the, these two.
Yep.
These are pieces of equipment that we need to work. We're getting rid of the server, but, and if you wanted a technical version, but they help with the Wi-Fi extenders and stuff here and at the shop. Thank you, the switch.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Okay, got it. Thank you very much.
All right.
Have we looked at other tech services to compare costs, quotes, anything along those lanes outside of Computer Magic?
For this?
For just our, I mean, for this or for our services?
We have not. I'm not sure when the last time we went out for RFP. We do have a contract with them currently, and I can check when that expires. But they do service all of this equipment as well. That is part of the contract and, and our monthly service bill as well.
How much do we have left in our budget for professional services? Because this would fall under professional services, right?
This is equipment, so that's not services.
And this is going to be included in our borrowing. This quote is included in our borrowing. This item was made, the village staff was made aware of this needed upgrade about three years ago. I don't believe it was brought to the village board, but should have been budgeted and planned for. And so, I have that included and have sent that to Ellers. And that can be an included item. And then, just my final statement is we are on a time crunch because, like I had said, October 18th is when everything goes live for Windows 11. And the, all of the equipment needs to be ordered. And the Computer Magic said that, once the quote was signed, depending on their workload and depending on the delivery and whatnot, it would be about two to three weeks. And then, they could get out and get everybody set up here and at the DPW. And being that where we are in the beginning of September, I would personally like to have this all ready to go by the end of the month so we're not, no one else would be able to use Microsoft.
Well, no, I mean, Windows, Windows 10 will still work. The problem is, it's no longer, the operating system is no longer supported by Microsoft. So, so, yeah. And I did look up on the contracts list that I did, and the Computer Magic contract runs through April 15th of 2026.
Twenty-six, okay.
Yep. It's an annual contract that looks like it renews in that April timeframe.
Okay. And we've confirmed that all of this equipment is 100% needed?
Yes. Yes. And like I said, I did go through and made sure and was able to cut, by cutting that, that server off and work around.
Do we have one docking station we're already using? So, that's why we're only buying five versus six?
Because my lovely laptop, as you guys know, it, it's in my nine-months year and it's just, it's up in, so, no, there's, there's one less docking station.
Yep.
Because they added an additional laptop for myself.
Right, okay. Because you already have a docking station.
I don't need a docking station. My desktop does not need to, is the only one that does not need to be upgraded. And this one will be a backup for anyone or if.
Something else.
And then, as most of you know, this thing has been fixed every single month since I've worked here.
Yep. It's probably costing us more money than it's saving us.
All right. So, do we have a motion for this quote?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of computer equipment from Computer Magic per the quote in our packet, to be paid for with, to be included with the amount that we need to go out for loan.
Yes.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion. I'm always hesitant to put the cart before the horse, and I feel like we're doing that here. But I understand that we're under, you know, the timeframe. I, I don't want to get into a situation where we're earmarking, you know, money for a loan that we haven't even gotten approved, approved yet, or hasn't even brought, been brought forward to us yet. So, I'd like to discuss that and however everybody else is feeling about that. Because I don't think that's, that's a good tactical move from a financial village standpoint.
Hold on. Let me revise my, my motion to take out the part of being paid for through the loan. We'll just have to figure out how we're going to pay for it with our budgeted money.
What do we have for budgeted money?
We do not have anything left in the, in the, besides what we owe left for the Computer Mag, Magic contract. This was not budgeted for, this was not planned for.
So, we have a revised motion. And do we have a revised second?
I'll stand with my second.
All right. We have precedence with this because we did the same damn thing with the.
Snowplow.
No, the fire and EMS money, last, last board meeting.
There we are. Oh, my gosh, you did it with that amount of money?
Yeah.
I don't know how we can expect our staff to do their job if they don't have the proper equipment to do their jobs. And I think that Paula right there is the only reason I can support this. Obviously, we need to have the equipment. We need, you know, yes, we know Windows 10 will still run, but should it go down, then we're in a emergent situation. But it's one more thing that we are identifying that we can't pay for, which is a problem. So, but yes, Paula, to your point, they, they need the necessary equipment to do their job.
Any other concerns about this? We have a motion and a second on the table, revised. I would imagine the library's probably going through the same thing.
They have support through the South Central Library System.
Mm-hmm.
And that's, they have, they make you budget for it, for the equipment. It's actually a line item. They, they request that we go, do the computers, not all at one time, but on a recurring basis, like two of them one year, two of them the next year, so that you don't have such a big budget hit. I'm very concerned. I know that this, we're talking about this particular budget item, but what other surprises are we going to have in
Yep.
in the budget that, you know, where equipment gets old and we haven't budgeted for it.
And to speak on that is, I did, and I can share, it's just a very rough draft. But I have created a capital improvement plan for the village and for Water, Sewer, Storm, and I've shared that with Ellers. And now, not all of those items will be action taken on in 2026, but I want money, budgeted, small amounts set aside because we have, I mean, from my knowledge, there have not been funds put for vehicle replacements, computer equipment upgrades, all of the things, even this building. I included the HVAC and the roof and building maintenance and things like that. So, going forward, all of those things will be included in the budget planning. It's just going to be a matter of how much are we able to put in for 2026. And I think that is a big component of what's been missed in the past.
I have a couple additional questions. Are these needed for the upgrades to what's happening with the Water and Sewer, like the billing system?
The billing system. That is not necessarily, I'm not sure if that will create an issue if we don't. I do not know with the new satellite reading. Is that what we're talking about?
Is there, is there software that, that is part of, part of that system? And do these computers support that software?
Yes, yes. And Computer Magic knows, when they did this quote, they went on Vicki's computer, they did talk with Vicki and made sure that the server was also not needed for any of the things that she does for the meter reads. And so, they did do a thorough analysis on all of that.
Okay. Because there's replacing equipment and then there's like future-proofing
Yes.
it a little bit.
Absolutely.
So, that we're not in this place. And then, just thinking about how people work, do these docs support more than one monitor? Do you have dual monitors?
Yes.
Or, okay.
And yes, we can.
Okay.
Yep. Every one of the admin staff and then the Utility Superintendent, and I believe Cody as well is going to need monitors, but we have extra ones.
Okay. Because there are not monitors on this list.
Nope, nope. We're taking care of that in-house. I.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Any other questions, concerns? All right, roll call, please.
Blackwood.
Yes.
Correct, Jacobson.
Yes.
Hollenbeck.
Yes.
Trendall.
Yes.
And Bruning.
Yes. I think Paula, you brought up a good point that we need, or Kristin, you both brought up good points about, we can't have the expectation of our staff to do what we expect them to do if we don't give them the equipment to do it. But, you know, our board, our board knew about this for three years. We should have planned for it. So, that's on, that's on myself because I've been on the board for the last three years. But some things kind of, when it's budget time, it's, it seems like it's a mad scramble sometimes. And I think that Computer Magic quote somehow got shoved under some salt or something, maybe. I don't know. Or some, some other.
Some other paperwork.
Some other needs. So, moving on with that, that motion passes. I guess my ask of you, Lucy, as the treasurer, is to make sure you differentiate those like we had with the last board meeting with the fire and EMS payment for third quarter. This kind of situation here, even though the, the motion was amended, we consolidate those aside so we have a particular number when we do have to go to Ellers and make that happen.
I've already provided the exact numbers to Ellers.
Okay, all right.
Yep.
Appreciate that. Moving on to eight C, discussion of possible action regarding the resolution requesting exemption from Dane County Library Tax. Now, we usually get this every year.
Yes, we do. This is just.
But we're missing Jefferson Counties, right?
Because we usually do both of them at this, at the same meeting? Dane County and Jefferson County, so?
My apologies. I, in, I thought I was just a.
And you might only have Dane Counties. Maybe you didn't get Jefferson Counties yet?
Yeah, yeah. Samantha sent this to me and I believe this was the only attachment. But I will check on Jefferson and I can add that to our meeting on the 23rd. But yes, this is an annual, it's a resolution, basically, so that they don't get double taxed.
Trustee Brunig, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution requesting exemption from Dane County Library Tax.
Blackwood, seconds.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Questions, comments? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, motion passes. Moving on to eight D, discussion of possible action regarding financing and borrowing options. Now, I believe that we have been kind of punting this question, but there's still some, some questions we have for Ellers and they're going to come to the next meeting, I believe.
Next meeting, they have a presentation. I met with them several times last week. This document is just kind of a preview for the borrowing part. And then, they are going to help inform on the borrowing options the next meeting as well as do a budget overview based on, I've, I've been diligently working with them submitting all of, all of the things requested. And basically, what this is. And basically what this is showing, that this amount of the 677,502 that is noted, that is based off the spreadsheet that I provided. So that has the fired EMS, what's, what is over our budget of 201,000 and then some. And then it has our former administrators payout that was not budgeted. It has the snowplow and I put down the original price for that in there. And then it also has. So Computer Magic, snowplow, administrators, three payouts, and fire and EMS.
Okay. Any other discussion?
So. This is going to take care of things for 2025. Do we need to add on?
So, so I'm going to, I, from my meetings with Ellers, they have a path forward without adding any borrowing base besides those specific line items.
Okay, so my concern is if we're going to, I guess we'll wait and see what happens in January, never mind. I have, I don't know how we're going to pay for fire and EMS next year, because I, I don't know.
And they have some different ideas of how to go about that as well.
Okay, perfect, then we'll handle that during budgeting time.
Yes.
Okay.
My question to Kristen is, when is that budget going to be done for fire and EMS?
We have a budget meeting on September 17th. So the hope is that we will have a, or a budget to bring to the municipalities by the beginning of October.
All right.
And this is really just an FYI in the packet for today, we're going to talk about it more at the next meeting.
They just wanted to get, give this to you to kind of get you thinking about our options in, from my understanding, that state trust fund loan is usually the best option, but they are going to recommend going out to local banks between 9:10 and 9:20. And then, and then let us know what, what, so there will be an action. If you'd like me to, to reach out to the banks with this exact amount for their specific rates for 20-year taxable GO notes to compare to the state trust fund. I believe the state trust fund is going to be the best option. But because there are less fees, it is literally for situations like this for municipalities. And then Ellers would present the options at the 9:23 meeting, which also would include our full financial management plan.
And just if for anyone who doesn't know, the GO note stands for general obligation? General obligation note.
So no action or?
No, action to direct staff to reach out to the local banks in the next 10 days. And then whatever comes back, then I will provide that directly to Ellers and then they'll be able to help inform and educate regarding the options for the board to make the final decision at that meeting.
Anybody want to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to direct staff to reach out to our two local banks to see what rates they will offer for a 20-year GO note for the amount as specified in the packet.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Motion in the second.
Do we want to include like Bank of Deerfield, just considering the proximity to the village?
Absolutely.
Yep, we can do that.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. All right, moving on to nine. Moving on to nine, which is old business discussion of possible action regarding, A, discussion of possible action regarding the public works position. So I believe that is personnel?
This one, going to have Cody, go ahead.
Absolutely.
Can you start with it?
Absolutely, thank you. Over the last nine months, 10 months, it's been since the previous director of Public Works left, it has become quite apparent that we cannot get nearly as much done as we were able to. And I believe that is due to being down that extra staff in public works. I think that other, an additional staff in public works would very much help out a fair and manageable rotation for on-call, a week at a time. There are some jobs, for example, sewer jetting on the weekends, if there's an emergency sewer call in, that if you need two people for, if we, which is sometimes very difficult to do with vacation and sick time. If we were to have a sewer issue that we weren't able to get to, the homeowners can file a claim against our insurance, raising rates. Plowing, we could be done faster, less overtime, there are, we're only getting more roads and more sidewalks. There are several four-people jobs that we need all hands on deck for. And it is very, very quickly becoming apparent that the director's position is not a full-time fieldwork job. For example, finding grants and applying for these grants, it takes quite a bit of time, research and effort outside of the several other administrative duties that are required. If we hire a utility superintendent, that would be potentially funded by 100% water sewer funds. That would free up the remaining 25% that came from public works at the higher wage. And we could potentially put that towards a third public works employee at potentially a lower wage. We are also Tree City USA. And it requires a massive amount of maintenance to maintain these trees that we have. Jay is planning to retire soon. He said, I don't want to speak for him, but he's said potentially near the end of the year. We have a, if, if we could replace or add another public works employee, I believe it would add, add that lower wage with the reduced public works impact from the utility superintendent, I believe we could get someone at that lower wage and be able to potentially train them up as a new village forester to maintain our extremely diverse canopy that we have here in, in Cambridge, which I've been told is.
The best in the state.
The best in the state. And I had a meeting with the DNR recently and they very much so were happy that we were reaching out. But there is also a class being put on by the Tree Management Institute. That only happens once every three years. It begins on November 5th. It is a very, very, very cheap class as far as classes go. $425 for three separate days. It covers all course material, meals and lodging. That.
And there's a grant for that?
I am not sure on, on that part. The, the matching urban forestry startup grant can go to training, but you have to include that in the application. The, if we could get an urban forester trained, that would be an enormous asset. Not only to public works, but the entire village and its extremely diverse canopy.
So would you be looking at the position you're hiring would be going for that training?
Yes.
Is his voice awfully soft to you?
Can you speak up, Cody?
Yes, absolutely. I, I apologize, Sharon. Yes, my intent would be to, for the new employee to be hired, to send them to this urban forestry training. So. If we get someone in before November 5th and they can go to this class, that would be an enormous, enormous asset to the village and public works. And I don't believe we're getting any smaller as a community, as a village. I don't believe we're losing any roads. I don't believe we're losing any sidewalk. There are more apartment complexes being, as far as I know, planned to be going in at the vineyards as well as single-family homes. There are large-scale projects that have been neglected, for example, the sidewalk inspection and replacement. And it will be just as difficult to keep up with that if staff may, is maintained at its current, at its current numbers. Continuing to make plans to grow the village without growing staff, I believe is hurting us. And I believe that trying to pinch pennies by keeping the public works department understaffed is, is not the solution. So I would formally like to request that we add another, to our headcount in public works as well as our utility superintendent.
Which that'll be the in-class session, the utility superintendent position.
Right, I just wanted to make it clear that it was in addition to that.
Yes.
Did the Personnel Committee talk about this at all?
No, we did not. This has not come before Personnel.
Okay.
That was going to be a question of mine. It's, I, I have a lot of thoughts on it, but I think the Personnel Committee should discuss it.
Well, this was actually brought up to meetings ago, because I remember talking about.
It's been when I was gone.
Yeah, it was when the meeting, you were gone, we, it was talked about there. So it's not the first time this board has heard about this request.
Okay. So no, it, it was not brought to Personnel, though.
And not that everything has to go to Personnel first, I mean, the board can take up anything as well. I was just curious.
Yeah, yeah. Do we need to make a motion before we start discussing, or what do we need to do here? Because I have questions.
Well, I think when it was brought up before, Paula, you had mentioned about, well, where, where do we have the budget money for this? This, because that's where we were trying to pinch and save. There was discussion between Sarah and yourself about, you know, this is how we save money is because we didn't replace Todd's position. I know that there is a need, especially after volunteering for a couple of weekends, and I know that there's a need down there. But it's almost, you know, when I'm sitting there and I'm, I'm thinking about it, how do you go about this? From a fiscal standpoint, it's almost like, do you want the extra headcount or do you want a new plow? Because that's really what it's going to come down to.
That was going to be my question, Chris. Do you want the extra headcount or do you want a new plow?
Headcount.
Okay.
Then, then, then I could see it.
Yep, yep. And I think that's the best decision.
I mean, Chris.
Thank you.
Yeah, the only question I had is you mentioned as the public works director that it's not 100% field. We knew that, correct? That's not a new disco, new finding or new discovery?
No, correct.
Okay.
No, it's the, the amount of, the amount of time I have to spend at the desk or at the computer, it severely takes away from the amount of work that can be accomplished in our, in our day-to-day.
Okay.
So then, in effect, we only have one public works staff that's out in the field each day.
Correct.
We're going to run that individual into the ground and make them quit.
Same with the on-call rotation, having to be on every other week, yeah, yeah.
And then I just wanted to add the, and when it comes to, you know, budgeting and talking numbers, by having the current staff count that we have for public works, we're putting ourselves in a very liable state because we don't have the staff to be, don't typically have the budget, but that's going to be changed in 2026. But for sidewalk replacements and things, and we don't have any action be taken on things in our ordinance. And so therefore, if something would happen, it just puts us, that is my fear by not having the Personnel to be able to, to even make small repairs.
Or, or even the tree branch that was broken, that you got to as soon as you could. But, you know, what happens if, what happened if it would have been a couple of extra days and, because you didn't have staffing and.
Or there was another storm.
Right, or there was another storm and it came down and injured someone, that does put the village at liability, yep.
So in lieu of Cody's suggestion that we hire a public works position as opposed to a snowplow purchase, I would make a motion to add another public works position. Are we talking full-time, half-time, three-quarter time?
Full-time.
Full-time? Another full-time public works position.
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second discussion?
I think.
More discussion?
I, I just think Cody brought up, I mean, because two meetings ago, I think it was pretty clear, I didn't think, I did, I wasn't in favor of this. But I think Cody has brought up some really good points about why it's needed and and I'm seeing things around the village that just aren't getting done the way they used to get done. And I know it is 100% because we don't have the staffing. So, you know, that's why I'm changing my mind on how I felt two weeks ago, or two meetings ago.
So this would mean that we would have Lucy or staff put this.
Posted position.
Posted position out there. Do we have anybody in the queue?
We do.
Okay, so, all right. Any other discussion? All right.
The one thing I'd like added to, it's, it's completely up to you guys, but it did not put in, or Cody did the description, but we don't have an hourly pay range. Is that something that in the, in the motion that we could put and then have it posted?
And it can. Why don't we make a second motion for that? Let's, let's just, let's just do this one and then we'll do that one.
So we have a, a motion and a second. All those in favor of having staff go out for a public works position, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes.
All right, Trustee Hollenbeck will make a motion to add an hourly pay range of $22 to $26 an hour, depending on experience.
Trustee Brunig will second.
And I just pulled those numbers.
That was going to be my next question is, is what is our.
Well, I know, I know, yeah, out of my name badge. I know what our current staff, and it is, it is a lower rate than what our current staff would be at. But I personally don't think anything less than $22 an hour is a living wage.
No.
I think $22 an hour is iffy in itself, so that's why I started there and.
And you give them some, some room for qualifications?
Yep, exactly, depending on experience.
Incentivize that, so.
I think that's a good rate.
Yes, absolutely, especially considering that they can get their water certifications on top of that as well.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I feel like 22 is very low. Personally, I would have liked to have seen 24 to 27, something along those lines. I mean, I know that we start, that top range starts pushing.
I, I very much like for all Personnel to be paid well, very much so. Helps your job. Yes. I want people to be happy. I want them to be content. I want them to stay at this job because they like it, because they're paid well. I want all of those things. I, what I don't, what I don't want is for a, a laborer to come close to what a much more skilled position, you know, it's a much more certified position. I don't want them, I'm not saying they don't deserve it, I'm just saying I don't want that person who has potentially many, many more certifications, experience, and qualifications to be, have their wage tickled by someone who is potentially a lot less qualified. That may...
That causes a whole, your whole different set of issues.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, I think that the 22 to the...
26?
22 to 26, with the understanding that, that you have the opportunity to get these qualifications. Yes. And we already have that, where it's a dollar, you know, per qualification, per hour. You incentivize that when you, when you bring them in for interviews. They have, but that's on them, you know, they need to go out and get those qualifications and show the proof that they've done it, just like you guys went through your qualifications that way, so.
Good.
So.
I'm okay with that.
Roll call, please.
Trundle.
Yes.
Blackwood.
Yes.
Hollenbeck.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Brunin.
Yes. All right. Moving on to 9B, discussion of possible action regarding fireworks ordinance. Saw a few things here. Anything other than what's in our packet, Lucy?
No, nothing other, nothing other than what's in the packet. In the packet, I included, Jennifer shared with me the fireworks permits of the, issued by the Wisconsin Legislative Council. And then we have Fitchburgs. I feel like Fitchburgs is just very...
Concise?
Thank you, thank you. That's exactly, out of all the different municipalities, I looked up, that was, that was my favorite. And then this sale and discharge of fireworks restricted this section here. This is from the Village of Marshall. And those are just references as, as we look to update ours.
Okay.
I was, I was interested in this, and so I went out and looked, and it seemed like most villages let the, the state ordinances be more specific and less granular than six-page ordinance or however long ours is. So ours just really looks like it can be shortened significantly.
I would agree.
Yeah, it's very succinct with the penalties and everything else, too. So do we want to rewrite ours to look more like the, the Wisconsin Legislative Councils?
I think that would be probably the best template to go off of, so that we can keep consistency.
Want to make a motion as such?
Well, do we want to make, do we need a motion, or should we just have staff work on, write, put together what the new ordinance looks like and then address that in a future meeting?
That's what I was wondering.
Sure, and then, so this will, just so you know, this state one, it, it says the sale of fireworks is prohibited.
It is, like the, the big launching, those are prohibited in the state.
So would this mean that the current people that sell at the Piggly Wiggly wouldn't be able to in the Village of Cambridge?
Correct. I don't think legally they should have been here anyways because of the state ordinance, or the state. But that would, yes, that would change that.
Because the fourth option is to a person who holds a valid fireworks permit, but we've never had an actual firework permit.
Yeah, that's where our particular ordinance we have now is very vague. Basically, like go out and contact the village president, and he can stamp, rubber stamp something for you. No, thank you.
And I think we don't have, like, we don't do any sort of large public fireworks display.
Not in the Village of Cambridge.
That's usually like Ripley or Witch is Oakland and some of the other ones, right? And I don't believe we have any plans to do something like that.
So do we, does our ordinance simply state that fireworks are, that the Village of Cambridge will not have any, any separate ordinance? Or the, the regulation of fireworks will, in the Village of Cambridge, will comply with all Wisconsin State fireworks regulations?
Okay, we could do that.
I mean, is that, is that what we want to state?
That's about as simple as we can get.
Okay.
Basically, it writes it right.
Re-listen to that on the tape.
I will.
Okay.
And then, and then have a link, I mean, in our...
And then have a link in our ordinance to the states?
To the states.
Yes, that'd be perfect.
The state statutes. Okay, that's, that's...
And that, that takes away a lot of the ambiguity on, you know, penalties that we got into that discussion before. I mean, how do we, and...
Who can obtain, who cannot obtain?
And that helps our, you know, local police force, too. If they can just click on that and say, well, if it's, if we're going to punt it to the, the state, it's click on the hyperlink and you can look at everything.
Yep, yep, excellent.
Okay. So do you still want me to bring it back? It's so simple now, like that we're just going to have it up?
Make a motion to that.
Yeah, I think we can make a motion.
Okay.
Yep. Oh, okay. I will make a motion to edit the fireworks ordinance to reflect that we will use the Wisconsin State regulations regarding fireworks.
And I will second that. All right, any other questions or concerns on that? Put this ordinance to bed? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Okay, moving on to C, discussion of possible action regarding committee assignments for the Audit and Finance Committee. I asked for this one on there, Paula, because...
I wasn't comfortable when I was running the meeting. I knew I, I wasn't comfortable saying, oh, and Sarah, we want to sign you, because I didn't know if you'd talked to Sarah yet, and you weren't here, so I didn't want to...
So I, I wanted to put it on here so we can discuss it. Do you still feel comfortable stepping off?
Absolutely do, because I can still participate by coming to the meetings. And I think it seems obvious that this village doesn't think I've been doing a good job, so let somebody else step up and try it.
We're all about getting some, some fresh eyes on things and everything, too. I initially, when I did the assignments, I wanted some seniority in that. But like you said, we, you attend most of the meetings anyway, so, and we open it up for, they're all in open session. So with that being said, I will make a motion to replace Paula Hollenbeck on the Audit and Finance Committee with Sarah Schultz.
I'll second that.
Okay. Discussion.
And you said Sarah is aware that this is the plan?
Yeah.
We're not just blindsiding her with...
No, she made it very apparent that she's very much interested. That's her sole reason for joining is to, is to dive into the financial aspects of our village, so we'll give her the opportunity.
There we are. Sounds good.
So, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. Thanks. Thanks for the clarification, Paula. I didn't know. Maybe you were just like, oh, I don't want to...
No, I just, I just didn't, no, I didn't check that with you before that meeting, and so I wasn't, I was just felt uncomfortable. So I just did the one thing.
All right, moving on to 9D. Do we even need to talk about this? Yes, please. Discussion of possible action regarding the plow truck purchase. I'd like to add that if we're not going to go with the plow truck, I, you presented me an option. I absolutely wanted to go with headcount over plow truck. Just for your heads up, we are going to need, at the very least for next year, budget more money in repairs than for our, our current fleet, our current plow truck. Just as a, just as a heads up, we're going to need more maintenance money for that truck then.
And then...
Thank you for that heads up.
And just to let you know, I did put, well, again, it's all just a draft, but I did put vehicle replacement plan. That's something we haven't had. That's going to be in our capital improvement project, budgeting, and then I have, I just put numbers. We'll work with them where we set aside money each year for things like that.
Excellent. And, and we, and, and I think as a, as a village, our village residents need to understand that because we are not choosing to get a new plow truck, that means there may be times when we only have two plow trucks and not three on the road, which means it is going to take us longer to plow. So I think we have to make sure that we're, we're, that, that we understand that that's the balance we're doing. Yep, and manage those expectations.
We're still going to get the same quality from our Public Works folks that everybody's expected, but it, it just may take a little bit longer.
Yep.
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you. All right.
And then one final note regarding that agenda item. Ink Wieland from, help me out, Cody?
International.
The International, yes. Did, the reason that was also on the agenda is because he asked to come and talk to the board one last time regarding that, even though the board has taken action to not go, to cancel that contract, and we were legally approved to do so for several reasons. And he does want to come to the next village board and be on the agenda as well, because he had an emergency conflict for tonight. So that is up to you guys as the board, if you are okay with having that on the next agenda, or if you prefer him to have three minutes in public comment. You just let me know how you'd like to handle that.
I think the public comment is appropriate.
If he wants to public comment.
Already made our decision, but, you know...
Our decision on it's made.
We have two public comments on here. You can choose which one he wants to use.
Perfect, I will let him know that.
Okay. Anything else on plow truck purchase? All right, moving on to correspondence. We got a letter from Kenny Johnson, Friends of Cambridge Pickleball. Anything to add other than the letter?
Did we all get the correspondence about the ponds, the DNR ponds?
Yes.
You didn't get that, a copy of that letter, Lucy? Okay, I will forward it to you. You got it, right, Cody? Did you not get it either?
I am not sure.
Okay.
About weed growth?
About the lions, the fishing pond maintenance.
And the weed growth in it?
Actually, in, in the pond, in the water, is that what it's referring to?
It addresses the whole...
I don't...
It's from Clayton Fraser sent a letter. It's a really nice letter about the Cambridge Fish Wildlife and Fishing Wildlife area. I will forward it to both of you right now.
Yes, thank you.
And then that may be something that we bring up in a Public Works meeting, or we're going to need to take a look at addressing. My question regarding that correspondence, which whatever meeting we bring it up in, I, I think somebody should reach out to Clayton and ask him, you know, for costs that he's thinking about for, because he recommends some things.
Okay.
And then, and then the, my question would be, can we use Park Impact These dollars to help with that? Because I kind of consider those ponds a park. So that would be kind of what I'd look at. But I will forward this letter to you all. I did, I apologize for not looking at who it was all sent to, so I apologize for that.
Anything else on correspondence?
Do we need to address anything with the letter on the pickleball courts, or is that just main ed?
FYI.
FYI, okay.
Karen Marion?
Okay.
All right. Our second public comment is next, number 11. Any other public comment? Okay. Number 12, questions, referrals to staff, or future agenda items? Anything for Lucy, Cody?
Not different from what we've already talked about today in the meeting, so we've got a few things, I think, that we'll carry forward.
Yep, and next, I expect next Village Board meeting to be a big one, just with Eller's presentation and, and then the borrowing options. And so I will let them know to take that snowplow off of that doc, Excel doc, and we'll update that amount because that included that.
Okay.
So the snowplow, and then, and then you're going to take it off that for borrowing? And then you're going to make sure it's added and accounted for in our capital projects going forward?
Yes.
Okay. Looking at upcoming meetings, September 16th, we have Water and Sewer Committee. September 17th, Fire and EMS Commission. September 22nd, Economic Development, also Plan Commission. The 23rd, looks like Village Board. September 29th, Audit and Finance Committee. Isn't there something with the college, the high school? That's coming up here soon, right? Where myself and, what's it called?
I have no idea what you're talking about.
Yeah, I think you were part of it one time, like...
Oh, the kid review?
Yeah, but it's, like, Rob Warren was on it with me.
Yes, that's, that is...
And now Rob is no longer going to be...
That's the review board, the annual review board with Dean Comey.
Right.
And that...
That's coming up fairly soon.
That is, and my trustee laptop didn't make it through.
Maybe October, maybe October time. But we need a replacement for Rob.
And I, I did have one other, sorry, I'm going to go back to staff. And it, it might be kind of under Economic Development, too. The, the Main Street program, is that something that the village sponsors, the Main Street program? Or is that sponsored by the 523 Collaborative?
Are you talking, like, the WEDC?
Yep, WEDC, Main Street program.
We, the village, and I can't get on here, I'm trying to remember.
Okay.
If there is a small, if there is a fee, it's very small, I...
So the reason I'm asking is because the whole idea about WEDC is to allow our businesses opportunities?
Yes.
But if they can't access the website, because a lot of stuff is locked down?
Yes.
So how are we disseminating that username and password to... So how are we disseminating that username and password to people who might want it?
The economic development, that has been on the Economic Development Committee agenda.
Okay.
And I did, on one of our last agendas, was to renew. And now we need to get access so that all the business owners can get in there.
Get access, okay.
And that committee is also working to reach out to all of the local businesses for that and spotlighting and other things.
Okay, super, okay, thank you.
Nope.
Because I happened to be in a business today and they asked me about it.
Was it the avid gardener?
Yep, yep.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
No problem.
All right.
We should add, we had talked about having a Personnel meeting approximately one month after our last one. So I guess that would be early October, but we need to get that as well.
All right.
All right, number 14.
I will make a motion to convene and close session per 19.18, one Charlie of the Wisconsin statutes to consider the employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of the village employees, specifically the utility superintendent position in the Administrator three-month review.
I'll second.